7:00 PM. We're in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on February 1, 2021. If I could have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a move from Councilmember Reisner, second from Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Thank you. Next is communications. I have two items. One is communication we received from Molly Fitzgerald, who's the executive director of the Economic Development Council. It's a message that came to the mayor and myself, and it was reporting that 69 of the 83 businesses in Athens County received COVID-19 relief through the Developmental Services Agency. So this is really good news. And I think there are a few more bars that may be reporting in a little bit later, so that number may even go a little higher. Second announcement, communication that I have is a liquor permit application, and this is for pizza company LLC doing business as Pizza Cottage. And this is for 951 East State Street. It's a new designation, a D5-1, which is the same as a D5, and that allows liquor on the premises only. Beer, wine, and mixed beverages on premises or off premises, and then off premises and sealed containers until 2:30 AM in the morning. And so we've been advised of this, and said that if we would choose to make a response to this application, the response would be due to the Division of Liquor Control by March 8. And are there communications from other council members?
May I have one?
Okay, Councilmember Reisner.
Yeah, this is from a constituent of mine in the Second Ward, Mr. Brent Armel. We've had some email discussions, and I promised I would speak of his concerns to council for the record, concerns being concerning affordable housing within the ward. Also, his concerns about code violations being pursued and inspections being conducted in a timely manner. We spoke through email. I sent him some information and links to city officials who are more conversed and in charge of this type of thing. But again, I think the citizen needs to be heard, and so I promised I would speak out on his behalf tonight. So there it is in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications from council members? If not, we have Treasurer Marian McClure joining us tonight, and she has an interest report for us, the reporting through the fourth quarter of 2020. Treasurer McClure.
Thank you, Council President Nysli. I sent a copy, I think Debbie forwarded to everyone, to show the final totals for 2020, which was $129,247.54. It's a bit short of the projections, as you can see. The interest rate has, as you all know, not moved anywhere for a while, and it's not looking very promising in the future. But we did have some accrued interest that came in in January, over $43,000 from SEDAR's investment at Park National, which will give us a good start to this year. And I'll be exploring, we have a new bank amongst the respondees to the depository agreements, which you'll hear about, I guess, in a little bit, right, Chris?
Yes, we will.
I'm assuming you did not necessarily need me to talk about that now, that'll come up.
That'll come up during the ordinance reading, and so if you could stay with us through that to answer any questions, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure, no problem. I don't know if anybody had any questions for me?
Actually, Treasurer McClure, I do have a question, because there's one amount of interest that's $13,751.72 on the report.
That's the fourth quarter total. That entire line across the bottom shows each of the quarters, so that we can compare them if we'd like. Yeah, the only one that's higher is second quarter, because I had a two-year CD at Chase come due in May, which still had a reasonable interest rate at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Treasurer McClure? If not, we'll move on to communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No communication.
Thank you. Mayor Patterson?
I have a couple of communications tonight. President Nysli, we, as I have sent to council, we did receive an EPA notice of violation at the wastewater treatment plant. And I just wanted to give council a brief update on the path forward, the corrective action that was submitted to EPA. And basically, we have five operators of record. They're of varying classes, in other words, licensure licenses. We have four who are Class II licensed, and those are operators that can sign off on reports and whatnot. We have one who is a Class I. We are, that individual will be sitting for their Level II licensure. So that is the corrective action to where all five of our plant operators are Level II licensed. And that'll be happening within the next month or so that that takes place, in terms of getting that individual to where they can sign off on documentation for receipt of septicage and other operations down at the wastewater treatment plant.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
And just to make it clear to the public, this EPA violation is more of a violation of operation procedure as opposed to a spill or an accidental discharge of waste into the Hocking.
That is correct. That is correct. Right, and we have not received, you know, any, there's, we've sent documentation on to EPA, we have not heard back from EPA in terms of their, whether they feel there's a need for any other action for the city to take, or any type of penalty to be incurred from this. So, but like I said, I want to give council an update and make you all aware that you're correct. Councilmember Reisner, this is not that there has been an inadvertent discharge or anything of that nature, procedural. The, another item that I have is that there is an event coming up, February 18, from 6 to 9 PM. It is the Black Summit, communicating and creating a community of social justice and racial equity. And this is being put on by a group of different people, but the moderators are Karen Bailey-Lewis and Mr. Brandon Thompson, Dr. Carolyn Bailey-Lewis and Mr. Thompson. So just wanted to alert people to that. If you want to go to this, you can respond to, there was an RSVP, and it is reggie, R-E-G-G-I-E, at communityfoodsinitiative, with an S, dot org, communityfoodinitiatives.org. So wanted to make that, bring that to everyone's attention. The other is that coming up this coming, well, the 23rd, 23rd of February, 3:00 PM on the courthouse steps, there is the, clearly it's Black History Month, this is Coming Together Better, celebrating Black History Month within our community. This is being sponsored by the Athens City Schools Andrew Jackson-Davison Club, the Ohio Valley Bank, Mount Zion, Athens Black Wall Street Project, and Ohio University's inclusion and diversity and inclusion multicultural center. I'll be hosting that again, 3:00 PM on the courthouse steps. Other than that, Councilmember Nysli, well, without, you know, just to remind people, it is extremely slick out there right now with ice. Please be careful if you have to drive. It is currently a Level II snow emergency at this point in time, and I advise people to stay tuned. If you need to, I would look at the Athens County website and look at the sheriff's, you can go to the sheriff's link, the sheriff's department link, and they post what that level of emergency is, just in case it goes to Level III emergency, as well as the government channel, I'm sure we're pushing that out if we do transition from Level II to Level III, but we're currently Level II. Thank you, President Nysli.
Thank you. We'll move now to ordinances for third reading. 821 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
And President Nysli, I'm having, I can't get my video to start up. This, I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 0821.
Yeah, we have a second from Councilmember Fall.
I think that was Councilmember Smutley, but thank you. And this ordinance is very straightforward. It is authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchasing of softening salt for our water treatment plant. And further, the Service Safety Director is authorized to expend up to $155,000 from Water Fund 740 TC200 for said purchase.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 821. Any questions or comments from council members, administration, or our audience? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 921 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the Uptown area for special events during the 2021 calendar year, and to change requested dates or cancel events as necessary. And this is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nysli, thank you. I would like to make the motion to adopt 0921.
Second.
Okay, second from Councilmember Crowell.
Perfect, and thank you. And so this is, and I do actually, right up front, I do want to thank Assistant Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky for putting this together this year. I find that having all of the events being listed upfront forward helps our Uptown business owners, they're able to then look at the, look at the year and plan accordingly as these dates come up. And I also want to remind the public and everyone here that even though we have the dates listed in the ordinance for these events that would, that would trigger street closures uptown, it really, everything is still up in the air. We cannot plan to actually see the International Street Fair on April 3, but hopefully, as the year goes on, we may see some of the other ones still, still hold their dates.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any questions or comments from council members, administration, or attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1021 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in a designated area, and this is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nysli, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this 01021.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Crowell.
Perfect, thank you. And this is one of a trio of ordinances. This will allow the suspension of our noise ordinance for specific events that would require that suspension, so thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance, and do we have any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance is approved. Thank you. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1121 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area, and is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nysli, thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt 01121.
Second. Second from Councilmember Claude Felter.
Thank you. And this, once again, just suspends an ordinance allowing these, these events to, to have vending uptown in areas which isn't, which are not allowed during the course of the year.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 1121. Any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. For this readings, the second readings of the following three ordinances, I will read the title. I'll pause briefly to ask if there are any comments or questions, but that's the second reading tonight, and we, and so we'll be just reading them tonight and then on for their third reading next week. Ordinance 1221 is an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property being sold by internet auction, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to 1321. That's an ordinance amending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14120, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions. The next one is 1721. That's an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to the University Estates Homeowners Association to allow a guardhouse structure on University Estates Boulevard at the State Route 682 entrance, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Okay, and do we, yes, a question from Councilmember Claude Felter.
Yes, I was just wondering, we had previously discussed changing the terminology for that, for that item that we're going to approve or not approve. The guardhouse makes it sound like that would be a really kind of elite neighborhood, and could we just call it a locker box or something else?
Well, that would have to mean changing a lot of the paperwork that has already been okayed. So I think that maybe we can just nickname it the Locker Box.
Maybe there's a better term, but okay, I think it would cause fewer questions with a different term, but I understand.
You know, once we stop talking about it, people are just gonna look at it and say, oh, it's a locker box. So, thank you.
And, all right, I think our comments in the minute will be reflected in last week's minutes where we clarified what it is, but thanks for the suggestion, Councilmember Claude Felter. All right, we'll move on to ordinances for first reading, and several of these will need to be suspended tonight because of various deadlines or situations where we find ourselves needing to move these forward to meet regulations. And the first one will need to be suspended. So this is 1821. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 1821, to allow the auditor's office to post these changes in the February reports.
Okay, and a second from Councilmember Katsas. Okay, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. I'd like to make a motion to approve 1821.
And a second from Councilmember Fall.
Okay, I'll read through a few sections of this. This appropriation ordinance makes changes for the Richland Pedestrian Project, the Parking Garage Fund, and the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project. Section 1, the 2021 appropriation ordinance 140-20, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $13,000 to Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500, to cover hand railing, the remaining final part of the contract for Richland Pedestrian Project, and $14,100 to Parking Garage Fund 730 for note renewal, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section 2, the 2021 appropriation ordinance 140-20, is further amended by decreasing and increasing the following: decreasing issue 2 fund 590, transaction code 500, by $800,000 for the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project, number 315, and increasing Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500, by $800,000 for the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Thank you, President Nysli.
Thank you. And one clarifying point, and this is my not following closely enough when we were suspending, the reason for suspending it was to allow the auditor to post changes in the February financial statements, so just so we have that on the record, so thank you. All right, we have a motion and second for approval, and I see we have a comment from Councilmember, a question from Councilmember Katsas, yes?
Yes, yes, President Nysli, thank you. So since this is just a shifting of funds, and I ask this because I am still a property owner on Stimson Avenue, is it, is this something I should recuse myself? I am not appropriating money to the project, but merely shifting funds from line to line?
It's a good question. Then I see the law director saying she doesn't think you need to in this case, because it's not appropriating money, but it's a good.
I don't see that in any way this benefits you. I think that the easements that we had in the past, people were paid for those easements, but this in no way would benefit you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. My internet connection froze for a minute there, but thanks, thanks for those comments. All right, so the motion and second, any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Sorry, President Nysli, I just had a quick comment. We are now on a Level III.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for letting us know. Sorry to interrupt, but I figured I'd just share that for anyone who's listening. That's helpful for people to know. Thank you.
We can go.
All right. All, and we'll now take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance is approved, thank you.
President Nysli, I'm sorry, but I just wonder for maybe the journalism students or anybody else who might not be very familiar with what a Level III means here, if perhaps Mayor Patterson or you would just want to provide a brief explanation of the significance of that?
I think what we'll do is do that under announcements in other business, so that we can keep to the business here and cycle. And we'll still be here at the end of the meeting, and we'll keep on moving on, but thank you for the suggestion.
Certainly, and excuse me.
Ordinance 1921 is an ordinance amending ordinance 6320, construction and construction engineering of the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project 315, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. This is a companion piece to some of what we just did in the appropriation ordinance. This is a bit of bookkeeping to, to move some funds within the, within the city. So this is the ordinance which authorizes the Service Safety Director to spend the money for the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project, and the pertinent sections here are changing from $4,367,204 to $5,167,204, and that is from Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500. And then this change would also remove the $800,000 from issue 2 fund 590, transaction code 500. So it's just a bookkeeping to make sure we have our funds amounts in the right place.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right. Not, we'll move on to ordinance 2021. This is an ordinance to advance funds from the General Fund to the Parking Garage Fund, and amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. As mentioned, this is an inter-fund transfer, as discussed in the committee meetings, to help with the Parking Garage Fund, which is not receiving the revenue that it receives in a normal year. The commitment in the resolution is to follow a repayment schedule, so that we are repaying this money to the General Fund. So the appropriate sections here are, the 2021 appropriation ordinance 14020 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $14,100 to Parking Garage Fund 730, transaction code 600, for transfer to pay the upcoming parking meter note renewal, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. And also, section 4, the following inter-fund borrowing repayment schedule is hereby established. And this is from, the, the ordinance also authorizes the auditor to make the inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Parking Garage Fund 730, in the amount of $100,000. And the sum, the schedule which the ordinance establishes is the sum of at least $5,000 per year, beginning in 2022, until the balance of $100,000 has been repaid. Thank you, President Nysli.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, we will move on to ordinance 2121. This is an ordinance amending the ordinance 7720, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Nysli. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 02121, to allow the allocation that this fund begins on the earliest possible date.
Okay. And a second from Councilmember Fall. We have a motion and second. All those in favor of suspending the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02121.
And a second from Councilmember Katsas.
Thank you. Due to a grant that HAPCAP got in 2020, we, we switched around our, our percentages that we, that we split the city income tax. Normally, we have 73% in the General Fund, and have 1% in the Transportation Assistance Fund, 214. Last year, we increased the General Fund up to 24, up to 74%, and, and did not contribute to the Transportation Assistance Fund because HAPCAP had that grant. We now need to shift this back, and so 73% of our city income tax will now go into the General Fund as before, and 1% will go to the Transportation Assistance Fund. Thank you, President Nysli.
Thank you. And just by way of background information, HAPCAP is the Hocking-Athens Perry Community Action Agency that the city of Athens contracts with to run the mass transit system, and so that's, that's the affiliation between the city and HAPCAP, and we will need to be able to provide more revenue towards the transit system this year, so. So we have the motion and second, any other comments or questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2221 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2021 appropriations in order to maintain a sound financial budget, and is introduced by Councilmember and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 02221 to allow the auditor's office to begin reductions as needed during this first budget.
Second from Councilmembers Medley. Motion second for suspending. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02221.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you very much. As the title points out, and I'll go ahead and read this ordinance, we have a very difficult year, certainly in terms of the city revenue for the auditor's office. And this gives them more flexibility to be able to do things in a timely manner. Section 1, in order to maintain a sound financial budget through April 2021, the auditor is hereby authorized to reduce the 2021 appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate and, when combined with the carryforward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriation of funds. Thank you, President Nisley.
Any comments or questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2321 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 12020, authorizing the Arts West Fiber Broadband Project, number 334, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. This ordinance is, as was just mentioned, an ordinance that is amending a previously adopted ordinance. And the change is just to specify which fund the monies will be coming from for this. And so it says the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to a previously stated $120,000. And we are crossing that out and changing it to $31,079 from CARES Act Fund 285, TC 500, and up to $88,921 from Recreation Fund Arts West 270, 553988 for said project. And so it is the same total amount, just specifying the appropriate funds for those dollars.
Thank you. And a question from Councilmember Claude Felter.
I'm just curious. I was kind of under the impression that Arts West was struggling a bit financially. Did I hear you right that over $80,000 of this would come from the Arts West budget?
I believe my understanding is that the funds came from CARES Act but have already been transferred into the Arts West Fund. Is that, I wasn't in the finance meeting where this was discussed. If the mayor or someone else wants to jump in, just to be sure that I'm speaking correctly on that.
I can just share with you that it's coming from 270, which is recreation. And so the money is there to be able to appropriate from 270.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. We'll move on to Ordinance 2421. This is an ordinance authorizing the design and installation of a generator to serve both the city building and the law administration building, project number 336, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And this is a project that I think a lot of us were thinking, boy, it'd be nice if we knew this was in place already tonight. But this is to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for design and installation of a generator that will serve both the city building and the law administration building. And the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $325,000 from General Fund Lands and Buildings 101, 120 TC 500 for said project. And this money, we planned on this at the, when the budget was laid out for this year. And this is money that's coming from a reimbursement from Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And I feel that that is appropriate and right because this certainly goes to worker safety and the ability for our city employees to do their job.
Okay, thank you. Well put. Any other, any questions or comments? Okay. Not, then we'll move on to Ordinance 2521. This is an ordinance authorizing a contract with Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And again, as we discussed in committee, this is an ongoing agreement that we've had for many years with Washington County. And it's just their county commissioners require that city council approve the entering into this agreement. And I know there's been a bit of publicity recently about the fact that our regional jail is generally full, especially now with reduced occupancy due to COVID. And so it is certainly a good idea for us to maintain these relationships with neighboring counties. So this just lays out the terms of cost per day per occupant that would be held at the Washington County Jail, should that be needed by our local law enforcement.
Thank you. And do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Patterson.
Just a comment, President Nisley and Councilmember Grace. Even with this agreement, this contract to work with Washington County, it too is predicated upon the availability of space in Washington County. This is a real problem in all of southeast Ohio. I would contend Ohio, period. You know, it was even before COVID-19. It has become exacerbated by COVID-19. It's a real challenge when we are having to look around to see where there is space to retain somebody. And oftentimes, that's not the case to where no one has space and we have to release the individual. So it's just, I just want the public to understand that, that this is an ongoing challenge when it comes to space.
That is absolutely correct. And I've certainly heard multiple conversations where people are contacting the judge asking for a recommendation for who could be released in order for a bed space to be cleared up here at our regional jail. And it's an issue that has been going on for years. And often, the jails in surrounding counties absolutely are full as well.
Thanks. Thank you for that information. Okay. We'll now move on to a resolution for first reading. This is Resolution 421. It's a resolution designating depositories for active monies for deposit in public depositories pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 135, declaring an emergency and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for R0421 as these designations must be made by March 1st.
Okay. And we have a second from Councilmember Fall. Okay. Motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries and the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. This is a five-year process that the city council does. And it is in order to officially designate our public depositories. The treasurer, who I'm happy to say is on our call tonight, Treasurer McClure, sends out applications to eligible banks for both interim monies and active funds of the city. Then the treasurer and the law director determine designations to be made to the qualifying financial institutions. And I'll go ahead, as an important five-year agreement, read some pertinent sections of this resolution. City Council, whereas city council finds that the securities and securities tendered by these financial institutions are proper and qualify as public depositories for the active public monies of the city and shall be designated as follows: JP Morgan Chase Bank, Athens, Ohio, not to exceed $10 million. Hocking Valley Bank, Athens, Ohio, not to exceed $10 million. People's Bank, Athens, Ohio, not to exceed $10 million. Merchants National Bank, Athens, Ohio, not to exceed $10 million. Park National Bank, Athens, Ohio, not to exceed $10 million. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, section 1, the active deposits of public monies of the City of Athens, Ohio, are hereby awarded in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 135.04G, as follows: 1, first $25,000 to JP Morgan Chase Bank on the basis of operating needs of the City of Athens. 2, the balance of active money to be deposited in Hocking Valley Bank, People's Bank, Merchants National Bank, Park National Bank, and JP Morgan Chase Bank. Criteria is established by the Treasurer of the City of Athens but shall not exceed the amount specified in each bank's application. I think that about covers it unless Treasurer McClure has more to add. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. And we have a motion, I'm assuming, and we need a second now for the approval.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Claude Felter, thank you. Okay. And any questions or comments? All right. You've done a good job of prep work, Counselor Treasurer McClure. Questions?
Yeah, I did receive a thank you from the People's Bank folks. They had people out due to COVID and they struggled a little bit to get it into us on time. But I did get a thank you from them, so.
Great, okay, good. All right. So we've got the motion and second. Any other comments or questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries. The resolution is approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being with us, Treasurer McClure. Yep.
Yep.
Good night. We now have announcements and other business. And as promised to Councilmember Claude Felter, the level three emergency means the roads are closed except to emergency personnel. So that's for all of Athens County. So thank you, Councilmember Medley, and for bringing it to our attention. And hope we can have everyone stay home and safe tonight and hopefully with power on, too. Next item that I would like to take care of tonight are the January financial reports, which council members just received last week. But I always like to keep current with getting those approved so we have it in the minutes for the auditor. So if we have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Councilmember Reisner and then seconded by Councilmember Claude Felter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Our next Monday night on 22nd of February will be committee meeting night. And just urging council members and city administration, if you have any agenda items, please check with our Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, so that you have those items to her by Wednesday so that we can get the agenda prepared. And then we have an extension, excuse me, of the poet laureate position. And I believe Councilmember Reisner has that information.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, at the last AMAC meeting, it was unanimously voted to recommend that the agreement of the poet laureate for the city, Wendy McVicker, term be extended by 11 months. So instead of expiring January 31, 2022, it would expire December 31, 2022. So I would like to make a motion that council approve this recommendation.
Okay, I see a second from Councilmember Claude Felter. So we have a motion and second to extend the poet laureate position that's provided, or was created in part through the Municipal Arts Commission. That's the AMAC that Councilmember Reisner was referring to. And this extends it to December 31, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. And thanks to Wendy McVicker because she's been doing a wonderful job. Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Yeah, I was just going to echo that comment. That I am very lucky to live across the street from Wendy McVicker. And if you don't walk the East Side neighborhood, one of the things that she's taken on before the snow was writing poetry on the sidewalk in front of her home. And it's absolutely wonderful. I've read some just great things there. And then people I've had to come home and look up. So if you have a chance, you're walking the East Side neighborhood, come by Sunnyside and look for her poetry. Thank you.
And I would concur with that. I often walk that direction myself. And you can just be walking along on your way to run an errand and all of a sudden, there's an incredibly meaningful poem by Langston Hughes or some poet you haven't heard of. And it really just kind of makes a person's day.
Okay, all right. And did I see that, Mayor? Did you have your hand raised?
I did. I'm simply wanting to echo what council members have expressed. I would also be remiss not to remind everyone that our second poet laureate is currently the state poet laureate, Carrie Gunther Seymour. And so, you know, for being one of the few cities in the state that has an official poet laureate or poet laureates are knocking it out of the park.
And poets are in general. I mean, witnessed at the inauguration, too. It's just wonderful. It's wonderful to see student, youth laureate poet laureates, too, at the national level. Yes, Councilmember Medley.
Thank you, President Nisley. To add to the praise of our current poet laureate, I wanted to express my appreciation for her ability to adjust to the times. She's done a lot of virtual programming, and we've appreciated that. And hopefully with this extension, it'll give her an opportunity to do more in person once things sort of transition back to normal.
Great. Thank you all. Okay. We have several people who wanted to take this next... Oh, let me double check before I move on. Are there any other announcements? Or other business? Okay. There is now the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. And I believe Mr. Keister indicated that he had wanted to speak. And it's an opportunity to speak for three minutes. And just checking, is Mr. Keister? Is he still there as an attendee? Yes, he is. Okay. Mr. Keister, if you could announce for the public and also for our records, your address. And then you would, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And you could go ahead now. But you'll need to unmute your microphone.
They made me rejoin the meeting for some reason. It crashed Zoom and it made me rejoin it.
Okay.
Earlier today, when I was testifying because I was a victim in municipal court, it, someone hacked it and made it so I had to call. And I filed thousands of complaints with IC3.gov with the FBI. They've done nothing about it. But I was wondering more details about the spill in the Hocking River. Do you have any more details about the spill in the Hocking River?
Oh, the spill in the Hocking River was under communications. I see, I'm sorry. I misunderstood when you said you wanted to speak and so you had some questions to that earlier item. Okay. And so that's what you were wanting to ask about?
Well, no, I was actually, I wanted to speak too, but I'll let you answer that later. What I'm really hoping that the city council can do is have a resolution to force the government to admit to the brain implant. You can see, this is my fifth book, Cuban Quest of Brain Implant Truth, the biggest scandal on the planet. And they've been kidnapping me on a regular basis, taking me into O'Glennett's, a Times ABH, for no reason whatsoever. Last April, they wouldn't even give... whatsoever. Last April, they wouldn't even give a reason. They claimed I made a Facebook post. And Obrennis has been stealing my blood, jabbing needles into me. And over the past, they've locked me up in numerous times just for talking about this issue. So I'm hoping that city council can have a resolution demanding that the government admit to the brain implant, the biggest scandal on the planet. They're trying to kill me to cover it up, so there is some urgency to it.
Okay. Thank you for raising the issue, Mr. Keister. And regarding the spill, I'm going to direct you, since we did cover that item earlier, Mayor Patterson has that information for you and can, this is on this, or not the spill, but the EPA violation. You don't have any information on that?
I do. And certainly, a point of clarification, there is no spill. The violation was just having an operator of record that was, had a level or class 2 license. Again, I'll repeat, there is no spill.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks so much. And we have then Jennifer Parsons, and I believe has three minutes and also has a slide to share. And then Sarah Hartman, I believe, wanted to speak for three minutes. So we will turn that over to you. And Jennifer, if you would let us know your name and address and the group that you represent tonight.
Sure. I'm also hoping that Sarah Hartman can also be in on this as well. We're going to split our time amongst the two of us.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'll wait for Sarah to be on.
Good evening.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah. Okay. So the floor is yours, and I believe you have a slide to share with us at a certain point during the presentation, too. So go ahead.
I do. Okay. I'm going to just pull that up. And can everybody see that? Okay? All right, great. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for welcoming us to this meeting. My name is Jen Parsons, and I'm the Executive Director of the Ohio Valley Museum of Discovery. We're here tonight to share a little bit about the museum and some exciting developments. The Ohio Valley Museum of Discovery, or OVMOD for short, has a vision to create a new, hands-on interdisciplinary experience for all ages that will ignite the imagination and inspire creativity. OVOD is a nonprofit discovery museum with a mission to inspire confidence in people of all ages to explore and discover the world. Our programs feature playful, hands-on, STEAM-based learning, and STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. We believe that this type of lifelong learning is unique for each person with a richness that is life-wide and life-deep.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Hartman, and I'm a co-founder and the current co-president of the museum's board. The museum was founded in 2006 by a group of community leaders concerned about the social and economic struggles of our region's youth. Almost immediately, the museum began offering programming in public schools, at local festivals, and in collaboration with other community organizations. In 2011, OVOD moved into donated space in the Market on State, where the museum's impact was able to grow. This space created a venue for field trips that drew schools from as far as Parkersburg and Jackson and allowed countless children and their families to visit our interactive exhibits and programming. OVOD strives to create a vibrant educational environment by celebrating our culturally rich communities while also addressing the challenges based here in an under-resourced region. We aim to support educators, families, and community leaders throughout southeastern Ohio. In the last year, we focused on being an educational resource for our school partners and for families throughout the region.
When COVID hit, like many other nonprofits, we quickly learned the meaning of the term pivot. When we launched all of our summer camp programs online, thanks to the support from the Athens County Foundation, we received funding from the Association of Science and Technology Centers to shift our popular Discovery Lab Makerspace Youth Program online. Our museum staff and volunteers worked hard to pack bags with technology tools and creative materials and met weekly with middle and high schoolers on Zoom throughout the summer. The museum's nationally-supported teen science cafe welcomed presenters from our county and beyond. Local students even videoconferenced with a gorilla researcher from Uganda and a climate scientist who shared her experiences of climbing Mount Everest. Now we're looking to the future and our post-COVID environments.
We are excited to share that we have secured a permanent home for the museum at 67 Columbus Road. The new space will allow for the installation of interactive exhibits, each one infused with a STEAM component and collaborative programming. The overriding theme will be discovery, discovery of your world, of your community, and of yourself. To realize OVOD's vision in this permanent space, we are especially excited about recently receiving an allocation of $200,000 through state capital funding. The location on Columbus Road is ideal. The building is set back from the road with ample room for arriving visitors and school groups that will arrive by bus. The exterior space is generous enough that expansion of the building and other site improvements are possible in the future. The main floor will be converted into the primary exhibition gallery with flexible space for events, classes, and workshops. All of us at the museum are looking forward to a time when we can gather for these meaningful experiences in person again.
Our vision will energize the west entrance to Athens and also draw visitors to the city by filling an indoor, family-centered entertainment void that complements the many outdoor experiences that the region has to offer. The space will also provide educational programming for school field trips, families with young children looking for engaging activities, programs for teens that connect them to future careers, and professional development for teachers. The new facility will expand synergistic opportunities to collaborate with schools, public libraries, nonprofits, university educators, student groups, and other museums and arts organizations around southeast Ohio. Finally, the new space will provide economic opportunities through the hiring of staff and a small retail space for educational gifts, games, and toys.
All of these amazing opportunities are made possible because of the generous support of our community. We are thrilled about the possibilities to come and look forward to updating you on the museum's progress. For information about the Ohio Valley Museum of Discovery, you can find us at www.ovod.org and on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We very much appreciate it, especially given the current conditions.
All right. Well, and thank you for that information. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
And there's a quick question from Councilmember Smedley, and then we are going to need to go to the journalism students in just a second. So, yes.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm so excited for you all. Great news about that latest development. It's been so fun to watch your evolution. I was a volunteer back when you were at the mall. So it's been fun to watch. Just a quick question, what's your timeline for the redevelopment of the facility that you're in now on Columbus Road?
That's a great question. And we really hope to be actually able to start renovations quite soon with the contribution from the state capital funding, which will allow, once the renovations are complete, it will allow us to actually start delivering programming in person even while the exhibit space is being further developed.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for being with us tonight. Thanks for waiting. And
Thank you so much.
Good to have you here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. And council members, we have joining us tonight Professor Suddes and his journalism students. And so each of you and the mayor received a link. So if you could log out of this meeting and immediately log into the other meeting, we'll join the journalism students to see what